Hey everybody, welcome back. We are kicking off our third session in the Book of Joshua. And I want to say thank you so much for joining us. If this is your first time, or you're not on our email list, please go to our website, WhitestoneChurchTX.com. You can go to the Contact Us drop down menu. Send us your name and your contact information. We'll be happy to email you notes the day of the study. Also, you can go to, on our website, to the Video section, drop down menu, and you'll see the Book of Joshua. And you can download the PDF of our notes for tonight. So we are in Session 3. If you missed any of our first two sessions, please go back and catch up and watch Sessions 1 and 2. They were really good. And it'll bring you up to speed with where we're at. We're super excited as a church, for Whitestone, that we will be back in person August the 2nd. So not this Sunday, but the next Sunday, August the 2nd, we will be live at 11:00 a.m. We are requiring masks and asking that you go to our website and sign up. But we are super excited to be back in the house of God together, praising and worshiping glorifying the Lord Jesus Christ, our Lord Jesus Christ. We will continue, as always, to do online church. So for those of you who are not comfortable yet to coming back in person, we'll still be online, live at 11:00 a.m. So our in-person service will be at 11:00 a.m. We'll be live on our Facebook page, our YouTube channel, and our website, all three platforms, 11:00 a.m. starting August the 2nd. So please join us. So grab your Bible, grab something to write with, grab your notes, and let's jump in. So Holy Spirit, we ask that you would open up our eyes and our mind and our understanding, God. We honor you. And we thank you for the Book of Joshua, Yeshua. And God, we thank you for mighty, your mighty presence, in Jesus' name, amen. So it's an honor for me to go through this book. My son's name is Joshua Caleb. And just super proud of him, who's a courageous leader. And so we'll talk about Joshua the man. We're also going to talk about Jericho, and our newest addition to our family is my son and daughter-in-law Vanessa, Joshua and Vanessa's baby Jericho. So we're just going to kind of hit all these family names tonight, so it'll be good. But turn with me, or go to the Book of Joshua, Chapter 1. We'll pick up and then we'll dive into Chapter 2. And so I just want to kind of go back over the front page of your notes. Joshua is a historical book. It's the sixth book in the Bible. It's a book of historical account of how God took the Israelite nation from Egypt, from bondage, across the Jordan River, and the conquest of the Promised Land. That Promised Land was promised to Abraham over 600 years before the entrance. And we'll look at that a little bit deeper. It's a book of warfare. It's a book of conquest. It's a prophetic book. So the Book of Joshua, like all the books in the Bible, they're all intertwined. You can read one and grasp the salvation story. But as you put the Old Testament books with the New Testament books, you'll just see this interwebbing, this intertwined, this conjunction, this connection, if you will, of all the books. So Joshua is a parallel book to the Book of Ephesians. And it's also a parallel book to the Book of Revelation in your New Testament. So the physical conquest of the Promised Land is outlined in the Book of Joshua. The spiritual conquest, as believers, our spiritual enemy that we face today, is outlined in the Book of Ephesians. And then Joshua, or Jesus, who will come back and capture us from Egypt, or bondage, or a place of not being in his presence. It's a book of him taking us from this earth into eternal Promised Land. And so we'll see that parallel. Joshua is a historical account of warfare. Ephesians is a spiritual account of warfare. And Revelation is a prophetic fulfillment of Joshua, the Book of Joshua. So let's just kind of dive in. And after the death of Moses, the servant of the Lord, it came to pass that the Lord spoke to Joshua, the son of Nun, Moses' assistant, saying, Joshua, Chapter 1, verse 1, "Moses, my servant, is dead. Now therefore arise, go over this Jordan, you and all these people, into the land that I'm giving to them, the children of Israel. Every place that the soul of your foot will tread upon, I have given you, as I said to Moses, from the wilderness to the Lebanon, as far as the great river, the river Euphrates, and the land of the Hittites, and to the great sea toward the going down the sun, this shall be your territory." We want to talk just briefly about the importance of land and territory, one more time. Point 1, on your notes there, God announced this Promised Land to Abraham 600 years or so before entering the Promised Land. Abraham was mentioned first in Scripture in the year 1900 B.C. So about within 100 years of Noah's flood, the end of the flood, Abram, or Abraham, is talked about at around 100 years after the flood. So 100 years after the flood, God calls Abraham, or Abram at the time, out of the Chaldeans. He makes among himself, he makes for himself his own nation. Now this is after the Tower of Babel. This is after the scattering of the languages. And at this point, Abram is called by God to lead the Chaldeans. Now the reason that God calls Abraham out of a nation is that of the 70 nations that came out of Babel, not a single nation on the earth worshiped God. Not a single people group made God their allegiance. They all worshiped Satan. They all worshiped Nimrod, who is Satan, the first Antichrist. They all worshiped Babel under different names. So we see all of these pagan religions beginning and being birthed from the Tower of Babel. So when God goes down and disperses the people, he scatters them in what scholars, biblical scholars would say, about 70 different languages or people groups. And they go throughout the planet Earth. But not a single one of them followed Jehovah God. Now when Noah got off of the boat, he had three sons, Ham, Japheth, and Shem. Shem is the son who follows God. The other two, Ham goes AWOL and starts to worship the enemy, and is the father of Nimrod, becomes the father of all of the Canaanite armies, the pagan cultures, that will soon invade or fill the Promised Land 600 years later. Japheth is somewhere in the middle. He's wishy-washy. But Shem, the son of Noah, follows the Lord with his full heart. And we see, in another Bible study, maybe we'll tackle how all that went down. But Shem is actually hunted by his brother Ham's offspring Nimrod. Nimrod was a hunter before God. Now Shem, Ham, and Japheth lived before the flood and after the flood. It's pretty wild. But Shem has a son named Terah, T-E-R-A-H, and from Terah comes Abram, or Abraham. So we see this lineage of the birth of Christ, which we'll look at in Matthew, Chapter 1. We see the lineage that goes from Jesus Christ all the way back to Shem, and all the way back to Noah, all the way back to Adam. So that's kind of a nutshell, a bumper sticker summary of that showdown. But Abram is called out of the Chaldeans, and God makes him a nation. He says, Abram, I'll give you so many children, you won't be able to number them like the stars in the heaven or the sands on the sea. I'll make you the father of many nations. So this birthing, in this dialogue, God takes Abram up to this big hill, if you will. And he says, I want you to see as far as you can see to this river, to this river, to this sea, to this mountain range, this is your Promised Land. Abram, I'm giving you this territory for you and your children to fill, to inhabit, to live in. Now when he says that, we have to understand that Satan is also privy to this verbal spoken information. So once Satan hears that God's chosen nation, who he chose for himself, when he chooses Abram, and God tells Abram, hey, look, this is going to be your land, Satan doesn't know why it's valuable. But he starts to inhabit it with pagan deities and pagan worship, pagan cultures. Now, it's interesting that those pagan cultures actually come from Shem's brother, Abram's grandfather. They actually come from Noah's other son, Ham. And so you see these two lineages, these two sons of Noah. One follows the Lord, one doesn't follow the Lord. One's caught in the middle. And so, just in a nutshell, so on the Promised Land territory, when God gives this to Abraham, he says, Abram, this is your land. Now, what we'll see is that is spoken on your notes at around 1900 B.C. You can look up that verse in Genesis 15:18. Moses is born while the Jews are enslaved in Egypt. So Moses is floated down the Nile, picked up by Pharaoh's own daughter, raised in the house of the Pharaoh for 40 years. Well, that occurrence is around 1350 B.C. Now we know Jesus is born like at zero, so we're about 1300 years before the birth of Christ. Now Joshua and the Israelites will enter the Promised Land about 100 years later, around 1200, 1250 B.C., somewhere in that range of time. So we see the announcement of God telling Abram, hey, this is going to be your land, to the actual inhabitation is about 600 plus years later. So the inheritance is very vital to the gospel. This is the Promised Land. Now when you look at Psalms, Chapter 2, it's a great dialogue with God. And Jesus becomes the inheritance. Jesus gets the inheritance of the people that are in the Promised Land. So what Jesus is doing is he's taking back the world that Adam gave to Satan. So when the world was created, God gave dominion to Adam. And he said, Adam, take dominion. This is your place. But when Adam and Eve sinned, and they ate the fruit, they gave dominion to Satan. So therefore Satan now had dominion over the world. Jesus on the cross takes that dominion back through conquering sin. And now Jesus will come back for his earth at his return. But this thing about Promised Land is vital for us to grasp. So go catch up on Chapter, on our first two sessions, when we talked a little more in depth about that. Psalms, Chapter 2, it's a great prophetic about the inheritance. Satan knows that the nations and the people are Jesus' inheritance. That's why he tries to get Jesus to bow to him in the temptation in the desert. Listen to this, verse 5. "No man shall be able to stand before you all the days of your life, Joshua. As I was with Moses, so I will be with you. I will not leave you or forsake you. Be strong and of good courage; for to this people you shall divide an inheritance of the land." The Jewish people are to inhabit the land. Now that land, that Promised Land, is still under contention today in 2020. And let me just tell you, it's not going to be settled by any UN agreement. It won't be settled by any presidential decree. It won't be settled, you know, like if Dennis Rodman himself goes to North Korea and makes peace with Kim Jong-un. No famous sports athlete, or politician, or Bill Gates, or business person is going to be able to bring peace in the Middle East because this very territory will be the staging ground and the continued battle for the Battle of Armageddon. Now, there's a great preacher out there named Perry Stone. And I never heard this till the other day. And so I'll just give you the bumper sticker version, because I'd like to dive in a little bit deeper. But Perry Stone is under the belief that the Promised Land, Israel, somewhere in Israel, is actually where the Garden of Eden used to be, the origination of where the Garden of Eden is. So I'll just kind of leave that there. But if that's true, that would be really good insight on why is this territory so valuable? Why would Satan not just give the Jews some land? And just say, okay, you inhabit that land. I don't really care. It's just land. There's something spiritual about it. It's not just land. We do have to understand this about the spiritual realm. And let me just talk about this for a minute. When Jesus is on the Mount of Transfiguration, and he asks his disciples, "Who do men say that I am?" Some of them say, oh, you're a rabbi, you're a teacher. Peter says, you are the son of God, the Christ. Jesus turns and he says, Peter, no man told you that information. You got that information from God himself. So therefore, Peter, upon this rock, I will build my church. Jesus was standing on Mount Hermon whenever he spoke that. And Mount Hermon is the mountain that the fallen angels came and descended upon when they saw the daughters of men and went and had relations with them and birthed the Nephilim, Genesis, Chapter 6. This Mount Hermon was a pagan ritual mountain. It was the home base for the god Pan, P-A-N, where we get the word panic. So this Pan god, it was a god of fear. Mount Hermon, where Jesus spoke this, was a place where the disciples were afraid to go. They knew that this was demonic evil territory. Jesus says, hey, listen, I'm going to go. And Peter, you're not just going to build the church, but the gates of hell will not prevail over the church. So what Jesus is telling us, go into the evil zone, the evil territory, and dominate with the gospel of Jesus Christ. Territory is very important. If you go back Jacob, to the story of Jacob, Jacob one night lays his head down on a rock. And he has a dream of a ladder, where we get the terminology Jacob's ladder. He sees a ladder where angels from heaven are ascending and descending. And he wakes up and he goes, I did not know this was holy ground. That territory, wherever Jacob was, was holy for some reason. Moses goes up to the mountain, and he gets the Ten Commandments from God. He sees the burning bush. He approaches the burning bush, and God in that fire says, take off your shoes, for the ground you're on is holy. There are specific territories on planet Earth. The dirt that we stand on, there's some dirt that is holy ground. Now, we can take ground for the Lord, but there's other areas that spiritually, those are entrances and exits for angelic beings. Those are, for whatever reason, dedicated to the Lord. It's true on the biblical, on the holy side. It's also true on the unholy side. Territory is vital. I can't say enough about it. So diving back in, look at verse 7, Joshua, Chapter 1, verse 7. God's telling Joshua, hey Joshua, be strong and very courageous. Now that statement is listed three times in the first nine verses. It's listed four times in the first chapter alone. Why would God tell Joshua three times in nine verses, be strong and be courageous? Joshua, be strong, be courageous. Hey Joshua, be strong, be courageous. Why would he say that? Is he just rah rah, let's pump them up? This is a good coach speech before the... No, no, he's telling him be strong and courageous for two reasons. One, Joshua probably wasn't naturally strong and courageous. Naturally, Moses, we get some insight on Moses' character because Moses grows up in Pharaoh's palace. And he grows up with Pharaoh's son, who then becomes Pharaoh when he goes back 40 years later and says, let my people go. He's actually talking to his brother. But he's competitive, and he knows that he's the adopted son, if you will. And so he's fighting for position. But we also get an insight that Moses himself was probably pretty sporadic, maybe a little given to temper, because one day he just spontaneously kills an Egyptian taskmaster that's beating a Jewish slave. And then he runs, and he lives off the land for 40 years. He lives off of the desert. He's not a wimpy person. Now he's not really wanting to go before Pharaoh either, but he does it. So Joshua is Moses' assistant. So Joshua may have been a little timid, a little shy, good with being in the background, didn't want the limelight. But God says, Joshua, be strong and be courageous. Now he tells him that because his personality may not be given to that. But the bigger reason he tells him that is because there's a formidable foe before him. There's a real enemy. There's a real city called Jericho. Those walls are bigger and thicker than any walls that they had seen before. The Jews, the Israelites in the desert, they weren't training militaristically. They're just surviving off the land. They're not even really agricultural farmers because God feeds them every day. Not that they did also grow stuff, but this group of people wasn't, weren't just these natural-born killers that were going to just go take Jericho. This had to be a supernatural move of God. And I think Joshua knew that. I think he's also reminded Joshua, hey, listen Joshua, when you were 40, you were one of the 12 spies. And in your 40-year-old gusto, you went in, you came back. And I'm so proud of you, Joshua, and I'm so proud of you, Caleb, because when the other 10 turned and said, no, we can't do it. They're too big for us, you stood your ground. So we do know that Joshua was bold and courageous then. But 40 years later, may have taken its toll on Joshua. Where maybe at the age of 80, he's not so full of vim and vinegar where he's just going to go take the world. Maybe he had been tamed a little bit. And God's saying, hey, don't forget that fight that's inside of you. Be strong, be courageous. Here's the biggest kicker for you and I, verse 8. "This book of the law shall not depart from your mouth." Now he's talking about the Bible. "This book of the law shall be on the tip of your tongue." You need to be able to quote Scripture. You need to be able to reference Scripture. You need to know Scripture. "This book of the law shall not depart from your mouth." Don't quit telling your kids Bible stories. Don't quit telling your grandkids what the Scriptures say. Don't quit giving that verb. It is not good enough for you to send your kids to Sunday school once a week, every now and then, and let the Sunday school teacher teach them about God. It's our responsibility to teach our children. Well, I don't have any children. My children are old. Then teach the neighbors' kids. Then get online and teach some, you know, you need to teach people, teach old kids, teach. So many older people don't know the stories of the Bible. And it's not just knowing the story, it's knowing the truth behind the story. Don't let this book of the law depart from your mouth, but you shall meditate. And I want you to read your own Bible, your own translation. Meditate in it, day and night. In it, day and night. Stacy and I, since COVID started, we've been memorizing Psalms 91. And it's not just that we're trying to repeat it. We're trying to get it into our mind where we know it by memory, but really let it sink in our heart so that we know that we know that we know, "When everything's falling apart, that a thousand may fall at our side, and ten thousand at our right hand, but it will not come near our dwelling." I have a friend that lived through the Bastrop fires a few years back, and on his street, every house burned except his. Now, that doesn't mean all those other people were bad people, and he had an end with God. But he just walked through that, and he goes, I couldn't believe it, that my house was the only house spared. Listen, get the Word of God in you. Though a thousand may fall, and ten thousand may fall, it won't come near that dwelling. You shall meditate in the Word of God, day and night, make that you observe to do according to all that is written in it. Are we living our life making sure that we are doing what is written in the Word of God? For then you will make your way prosperous, and then you'll have good success. Verse 9, "Have I not commanded you, be strong and of good courage?" That's the third time. "Do not be afraid, do not be dismayed; for the Lord your God is with you wherever you go." Listen, wherever we go, the Lord is with us. Wherever we go, God is with us. Can I get an amen? Joshua was one of the original 12 spies on your notes. Excuse me. Joshua was told by God. Joshua didn't go take what he was told to a vote or a committee. Have you ever been told something by God, and then you go and you tell 12 other people to see if they agree? Well, God told me. Now what do you think about what God told me? It doesn't matter what somebody else thinks. If God told you, you do it. In fact, usually when we go to others, and I'm not negating wise counsel, but a lot of times when we go to somebody and say, well, the Lord told me to do this, they may agree with it, but they'll sometimes also talk us out of it because it's scary, or it takes them out of their comfort zone. "Be strong" is listed three times in nine verses. Verse 5, here's an interesting thing. "In this chapter, for the first time in forty years, in three days manna will cease to fall from heaven." So in three days, the Israelites are going to go from being fed daily by manna to the next phase where that won't be repeated. Here's an interesting thing. Once we walk over the Jordan in our life, we're going to go, and there'll be some doors shut. And then we'll walk into a new season, a new door. I truly believe this, that we are, we're all having doors shut behind us. And we're walking into a new season of our life. But here's some of the scary parts. What we depended upon yesterday, we cannot and will not be able to depend on tomorrow. God told Joshua, prepare, for in three days you'll cross over this river. Hey Joshua, gather your provisions, but in three days, the manna will cease to fall. Get ready for something new. Are you with me? When you enter into your Promised Land on earth, not heaven, when you enter into that new territory, that new season, what you were dependent upon in the yesterday, you won't be able to depend upon tomorrow. And that's scary. Some of us want to go back to the desert, like the Israelites wanted to go back to Egypt. God's saying, keep going. Look at verse 10. "Then Joshua commanded the officers of the people, saying, Pass through the camp, and command the people, saying, Prepare provisions for yourself; for within three days you'll cross over this Jordan, to go into, possess the land which the Lord your God is giving you to possess." That word possessed means to take dominion and learn mastery over. It means to go inhabit. Go live there. Verse 12, "And the Reubenites, the Gadites, and the half-tribe of Manasseh Joshua spoke, saying, Remember the word Moses, the servant of the Lord, commanded you; saying, The Lord your God has given you rest, and has given you this land. Your wives, your little ones, your livestock shall remain in the land which Moses gave you on this side of the Jordan. But you shall pass before your brethren armed, all your mighty men of valor, and help them, until the Lord has given your brethren rest as he gave you. And you will, and they also have taken possession of the land which the Lord your God has given them. Then you shall return to the land of your possession and enjoy it. Then Moses, the Lord's servant, gave that, which Moses, the Lord's servant, gave you on this side of the Jordan towards the sunrise." Here's a great principle. And I've been reading Chuck Missler's notes on this, so I forgot to mention that earlier. Chuck Missler is a great Bible scholar who's gone to be with the Lord. If you YouTube his study on Joshua, he'll go in deep on this and other points. But some of these notes on this segment, I definitely have taken from Chuck Missler to incorporate with tonight. Here's an interesting fact. What was just said in those four or five verses is there was two and a half of the 12 tribes. The Reubenites, the Gadites, and half the tribe of Manasseh, who said, we don't want to go into the Promised Land. Hey Moses, Moses, they made this agreement before with Moses, hey, give us the land on this side of the Jordan. We don't want to cross the Jordan. So Joshua is saying, hey, listen, you can have the land that Moses gave you, but all of your men need to suit up for battle and go fight with your brethren. And once the battle on the other side of the Jordan is over, then you can come back and rest. Now here's the thing. Those two and a half tribes wanted to stay on the Egyptian side of the Jordan, if you will, because of the trade. They were cattle, or horse traders. They were trading with the pagan tribes. And they didn't want to lose that business edge or the possession of what they had. But they were border dwellers. So they were borderline going into the Promised Land. There was about 136 men that should have gone into battle with Joshua, but only 40,000 of them went. And what happened is, this is a great picture of the Christian life that a lot of us want to go into our Promised Land, but we don't want to give up what we have here. So what these guys were doing, these tribes, they were giving up community with their brethren. They were giving up possession of the land that God gave them, and they worked a deal to stay on this side for ulterior motives. And that's the problem with a lot of Christians, is we don't want to go all in. We want to stay where it's comfortable. We want to stay over here. We wanna stay where it's comfortable, we wanna stay over here, we wanna do the bare minimum. Okay, I'm not gonna send you all of our warrior men's, we'll just send you a third of the men to go to battle with you, we'll just give you a third of our commitment. But the scary thing is, there are a lot of believers who are borderline going into the promised land. And you gotta hear that. A lot of us will not inherit the promised land. Now, we'll have to do a whole nother study much later, because I I don't know enough to even begin. But there is a difference on entering the promised land and inheriting the promised land. As believers, we desire to inherit the promised land. Can I get an amen? And I'm talking about heaven. It's not gonna be good enough just to enter, and so don't let the devil fool you. Oh, well, as long as I get to go. No, 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 you want to possess and own, you wanna go take what's yours. Because why? Because Jesus died on the cross for it. It's yours to inhabit. These these brethren, I I just put some notes here, they just represent borderline believers. So Joshua answered them in verse sixteen. All that you commit, or they answered Joshua in in response, the people are giving their full pledge commitment to Joshua, they. They've let Moses's leadership style and and dreams go, and now they're following wholeheartedly Joshua. Which speaks greatly to his character. People will follow you if they first know your your character. All that you commanded us, we will do, and wherever you send us, we will go. Just as we heeded Moses in all things, so we will heed you. Only the Lord your God be with you as he was with Moses. Verse eighteen, whoever rebels against your command and does not heed your words, and all that you command him shall be put to death. Only be strong and courageous. So the people pick up the chant of God. And the people say, hey, Joshua, we're gonna follow you, but Joshua, remember, only be strong and only be courageous. So Joshua is now heard this four times, and to to do God's will, it's gonna take great courage. It's gonna take great strength that doesn't come from you, not your financial strength, not your mental strength. Not your emotional willpower strength, the strength of the Lord. Be strong, be courageous. Here we go. That and spiritually Ephesians six ten, this falls in line. Stand in the day of warfare, stand, they're getting ready to go to war. They this, let's remember, these are slaves from Egypt, they've never been to war. So these thi- thi- this is like a new thing for the Israelites. They've never been to war, they've been beaten up all their life, but they've never been to war, much less win the war. Here's the book of Revelation. The book of Revelation is, you'll see this parallel in just a couple of notes, and as we progress, we'll we'll definitely pull more out of Revelation, but. But Revelation is waiting for a military warrior to dispossess the enemy from this land. What did the disciples want Jesus to do? Did they want him to be a lion or a lamb? The disciples at the time of Jesus wanted him to be a lion and come and raise an army and dispossess Rome. And all uh uh people against the Israelites and set up a kingdom. But the first time that Jesus came two thousand years ago, he came as a baby in a manger as the lamb of God that would be sacrificed. But on his return, he's returning as a mighty warrior. Joshua is a mighty warrior to dispossess people usurpers from the land of God. Jesus is gonna return and go to battle against everybody that's on his earth that doesn't love him. Now think about that, everybody that's on the earth right now, if you don't love Jesus Christ. Then you don't love the Creator and the owner of the house that you're in. So if you come to my house and you hate me, I'm gonna ask you to leave. So so Jesus is gonna dispossess, so he's gonna return as a mighty warrior. Interesting thing. This conquest of the promised land takes the Israelites seven years. Oh, that's coincidental, there's gonna be a seven year tribulation. Nope, not coincidental, it's a type, it's a shadow. Okay, it's a foretelling of something that's gonna happen in the future. Um, we're gonna see when they go to the city of Jericho that they 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 start to blow trumpets. Well, there's there's seven trumpets in the book of Revelation. And the interesting thing, between the sixth and the seventh trumpet, there's silence. Well, there's gonna be silence on their seventh day around the walls, they're to walk in silence until they shout the victory. Uh, till they make the trump of victory shout. And so um the Levites go to war against Jericho, the church is to go to war against the enemy. Um, the two witnesses, we're gonna see two witnesses, not twelve, but two. Now, now Moses sent twelve witnesses or twelve spies. We're gonna see where Joshua sends two in that we haven't got there yet. Uh, and then Rahab, uh, the prostitute is a definitely a um. A representation, a type and shadow of tribulation saints. So here we go, let's dive in, chapter two. Now Joshua, the son of Nun, sent out two men from the uh the Acacia Grove. To see to spy secretly. Now Joshua, the son of Nun, sent out two men from the Acacia Grove to spy secretly saying. Go view the land, especially Jericho. So Joshua, before they crossed the Jordan. Alright, you two, over here, need you to go do some reconnaissance, I need you to go spy out the land. Cause we're fixing to to dispossess the usurpers. I want you to spy out the land, but I especially want you to navigate, spy out, discover what's going on in this city called Jericho. So he sends out two spies, two witnesses before the return of Christ. So they went and they came to the house of a harlot named Rahab and lodged there. And it was told the king of Jericho saying, behold, men have come here tonight from the children of Israel to search out the country. Now Rahab, the harlot in Hebrew, the word harlot meant, it it also, it meant prostitute. But it also meant innkeeper, which the two kinda go hand in hand. The 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 innkeeper uh was also running a house of prostitution, if you will. But Rahab here is is not just a harlot, but you would also go there just to. To rent a room, a a hotel room, so she's an innkeeper slash harlot. It was told the king of Jericho. Now we're gonna dive into Jericho uh was was a city. That was after named after the moon god. And 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 like Muslims today who worship the moon god, the crescent moon, that's part of their worship, their deity. This was a pagan city, and the king here represents a type or a shadow of Satan himself. And so the king that's ruling over this thing is is ruling over this domain. That is trying to intimidate and prevent God's people from invading. Can I get an amen? So behold, the men who have come here tonight from the children of Israel to search out the country. I just wanna read this chapter. So the king of Jericho sent to Rahab saying, bring out the men who've come into you. And who've entered your house, for they've come to search out all the country. Then the woman took the two men and hid them, she said, yes, the men came to me. But I don't know where they where they were from, and it happened as the gate was being shut when it was dark that the men went out. Where the men went, I do not know, pursue quickly, for you may overtake them. So Rahab deceives the soldiers that come, she's hiding the two spies. Now you gotta ask yourself the question, why? Why is she gonna hide these Israelites? Why not just turn them in? She's putting her own life in danger. If she's found out, she'll be killed as a traitor. If she finds out, she she won't live through the night. But why would she lie to the people and say, oh yeah, they were here, but right before the gate shut, they fled. You need to quickly go get them. Why does she, you know, divert the enemy, if you will? Verse six, but she had brought them up to the roof and hidden them with stalks of flax. Which she laid on the roof of her house. Then the men pursued them by road to the Jordan to the forts, and as soon as those who pursued them had gone out, they shut the gate. So the picture is, at night, which was customary, they would shut the gates to keep intruders in. Uh, to prevent intruders coming in. As the soldiers, the Jericho shoulders go out to to find these two Jewish spies. Uh, they're hiding on her roof, she lies, they they uh she fools them. Verse eight, now before they laid down, she came up to them on the roof and said to the men. Now listen to this, this is Rahab, she's a Jerichoite, Jerichoian, she she's from Jericho. She's a Gentile, she's not Jewish. She's she's heard about these people. So we'll bring up some interesting points here in a minute. But this is what she says, I know that the Lord has given you the land. What land? Jericho and the promised land. I know the Lord has given you two guys that just came in here tonight, I know the Lord's given you this land. That the terror of you has fallen on us, I know everybody in my city scared because they see you about to cross the Jordan. And all the inhabitants of the land are faint-hearted because of you. For we have heard how the Lord dried up the Red Sea for you when you came out of Egypt. How long ago was that before that? Forty years. So an event that happened forty years before this night is still being spread, is still being talked about. And still bringing fear to these Jer- uh these inhabitants of Jericho. And what you did to the two kings of the Amorites, who were on the other side of the Jordan, Sa- Saehan and Og. Whom you utterly destroyed, and as soon as we heard these things, our hearts melted. Neither did there remain any more courage in anyone because of you. For the Lord your God, he is he is God in heaven above and on earth beneath. Now 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 who's afraid? See forty years earlier, the the spies were afraid of them, now they're afraid of the Jews. God's doing something. Now therefore I beg you, so Rahab is making a deal now. I beg you swear to me by the Lord, since I have shown you kindness, that you will show kindness to my father's house. And give me a true token, and spare my father, my mother, my brothers, my sister. And all that they have, in other words, their kids, and deliver our lives from death. So Rahab is actually a pretty good businesswoman too. She's she's uh, you know, obviously running a house of prostitution. She's storing flax, which means that she was industrious on selling grain, but now she's gonna work a deal, hey, listen. We know that your God's gonna come and conquer us. I protected you, now you protect me and my family. So verse fourteen, so the men answer her, our lives for yours. If none of you tell this business of ours, and it shall be when the Lord has given us the land, that we will deal kindly. And truly with you. Verse fifteen. Then she let down a rope through the window, for her house was the city's wall. She dwelt on the wall, and she said to them, get to the mountain lest the pursuers meet you. Hide there for three days, until the pursuers have returned, afterwards you may go your way. She knows something about tactical warfare too. She knows something about how militaries work. The Lord, don't be surprised when the Lord sends you a non-believer, a Gentile, if you will, somebody that is way out there. If they come to you and say, you know what, I know enough about your God, and then they deliver to you a tactic for you to inhabit your promised land. This is great insight for business, school, spiritual warfare. So the men said to her, we will be blameless of this oath of yours, which you've made us swear, unless when we come into the land, you bind. This line of scarlet cord in the window through which you let us down. And unless your father, your mother, your brothers, and all your father's household are in this house. So it shall be that whoever goes outside the doors of your house into the street, his blood will be on his own head, and we will be guiltless. And whoever is with you in the house, so what's the house represent? Could the house represent the church? So whoever's with you in the house, his blood shall be on your head if a hand is laid on him. And if you tell this business of ours, in other words, if you betray us, then we'll be free of your oath which you made us swear. Then she said, according to your words, so be it, and she sent them away and they departed, she bound the scarlet cord in the window. The two spies departed and went to the mountain, stayed there three days until their pursuers returned. The pursuers sought them all along the way, but did not find them. So the two spies returned, descended the mountain, crossed over, they came back to Joshua, the son of Nun, and told them all that had befalled them. Then they said, truly, the Lord has delivered the all the land into our hands. For indeed, all the inhabitants of the country are faint-hearted because of us, the tables have turned. This story's very uh rich in its prophetic meaning for our our time and day and age. This story is very prophetic to see the hand of God all through the scripture. So here's some interesting facts about Rahab, uh, she shelters the spies. In this chapter, they're called spies, but when you read about them in the book of James, they're called messengers. So we just finished our study in James, in James, chapter two twenty-five, it says Rahab, the harlot, was also justified by the works. When she received the messengers and sent them another way. Rahab in Hebrew means innkeeper, but it definitely in the Greek means prostitute. And she most, she was a prostitute, but we also need to just understand she's also running a business there. Like a hotel or a a hostel, if you will. Here's something crazy, go to your Bible and go to Matthew, chapter one. And if you're anything like me, um, all the years in, you know, Bible study in the church. I've just kinda read the first sixteen or so verses of Matthew, chapter one, and thought, what a boring. Passage, who cares? So and so begat, so and so begat, so and so begat, so and so begat, so and so, you got so and so. Who cares? Who had what babies? Just get to this Jesus guy, who cares? Well, unbeknownst to me and in my ignorance, uh, and foolishness most likely. Matthew, chapter one is rich in understanding the bloodline of Jesus. So here's a crazy thing for you to do on your own, and there's a great uh YouTube video. Um, I think it's maybe three or four hours long, broken up into some segments. Uh, called reversing uh Mount Hermann. Uh, or yeah, reversing Herman, Hermann, uh, by Dr. Michael Heiser. And he'll go into great detail, he's also written a book under that same name, reversing Hermann, you can download it on Kindle, you can. Uh, order it off his website or whatever, I have it on Kindle. But in chapter one, uh, in studying the genealogy, Chuck Missler does a great job at at deciphering this also. This genealogy is written to the Jewish person, and it takes the birth of Jesus back to Abraham, Father Abraham. In Luke, chapter three, the genealogy in Luke is written to the Gentile. That takes the birth of Jesus back to Adam. Now both are the same lineage, but it's it's giving you different insight on who and where did Jesus's bloodline come from. Here's an interesting thing, Rahab is in the bloodline of Jesus in Matthew, chapter one, verse five. So we have a prostitute who is a Jericho inhabitant, Gentile. Who's in the lineage of Jesus Christ. It's amazing to see how Jesus can and will save anyone and turn their life around. I don't know, maybe you have been in a life of prostitution. Either being the prostitute yourself or the person that visit, God can change your life. And take even the the worst of the worst and turn them into somebody that he'll say, you know what? I'm gonna pick Rahab and bring my lineage through her. Now the reason I brought up Dr. Michael Heiser was this reason. There's actually five women listed in the lineage of Jesus Christ, which is extremely unusual. Because women were never listed in lineages in in other other parts of the scripture, they're rarely there. It's always so and so man, we got so and so man, we got so and so, the women were just not mentioned because that's where the naming came from. But here's an interesting thing, all five women listed in the lineage of Jesus all have sexual. I'm trying to think of the word, they all have sexual escapades in their past. That God brings them through. Now some of them were their own doing, some were not, but they were the talk of the town, all the way up to Mary. Who had no sexual impropriety at all, but she was the talk of the town, oh yeah, she's a virgin, uh huh, who's gonna believe that one? but she was the talk of the town. Oh, yeah, she's a virgin. Uh huh. Who's gonna believe that one? Whatever. Well, Mary is over here in this little category, but these other four, we have Tamar. We have Rahab, and it's very interesting, the wife of Uriah. Well, they don't even name her name in here, but that's Bathsheba, who Dan- who David has an affair with and then kills Uriah. So and and then the other one is Ruth. So you'll have to kind of do your own study, but it's a great study into the lineage, and why would those women be listed? Because God can redeem anybody. Um, we already talked about the two spies. Uh, in Matthew, chapter twenty-five, it's very interesting. Um, what if two spies came to you? Would you house them, feed them, and believe them? You know, Jesus says, how you treat the least of these is how you treat me. Let's just put ourselves in the in the in the position of Rahab. And here's how good God is. Where did Rahab get saved? She lives in Jericho. They're worshiping the moon god. This is pagan. You know, they're not worshiping Jehovah. Could it be that through her profession, she hears a lot of stories? And one day she goes, you know what, Jehovah, I give you my life. Now, could it be coincidental that the two spies just happened to go to her house? Could it be that the two spies just happened to get protected by this lady who who just happens to be a prostitute that just happens to to hide the spies of God and deliver them and happens to put this red scarlet rope and lower them down? That red scarlet rope represents the blood of Jesus. It represents Passover. It represents the saving blood of of Jesus Christ. It's this foreshadowing of of events they don't even know about. I mean, they why didn't she pick purple? Why didn't she pick green? She just happens to pick red, representing the blood, representing the Passover? What what it, how did she get saved? Well, let me tell you what I believe. And and I forgot the numbers, but Jericho is a very large city. Probably more than seven thousand people living in this city. I I forgot, I've I've anyways, it's a, there's a lot of people. The spies could have stayed in several different locations. Could it be that before destruction, now hear me on this. Could it be that before destruction, like Sodom and Gomorrah, God says, there's one lady in that town that I'm gonna go rescue before I've destroyed it, because she believes in me. And you know what? I'm gonna even allow her to marry one of the Israelite men, a guy named Salmon, S A L M O N, who hadn't crossed the river yet. He's been praying to me for ten years for a bride, and all the Jewish women are turning him down. You know what? I'm gonna save that Jewish man for this Gentile prostitute. I'm gonna save her. I'm gonna go into the city. I'll steer my two little spies to her house alone. She will reveal to them her faith in their God that they may not even have that much faith in. And I'm gonna bring her and her family out of that city, and I'll integrate them in as Gentile believers through the blood of Jesus Christ. I'll integrate them in to my holy people. This is a picture of God saving you and I. If you're listening to me and you're not Jewish, then you are a Gentile. And God, through the blood of Jesus, has allowed us to merge into the fold or into the family of God, if you will. So what's happened here is this huge picture of God rescuing this lady who hears our prayers, delivering her whole family with her. And we'll see later where they're saved. And now we go to Matthew, and she's listed in the lineage of Jesus Christ. It blows my mind. Um, down to number six. Jericho means Bet Harad, the house of the moon god. It's the M is Islam worship. Uh, it was the dominant city of Canaan. It was the biggest city in the in in the promised land. Uh, Jericho was is north of Sodom and Gomorrah. The king of Jericho knew of its destruction and the deliverance of the of the Jew of the Israelites from Egypt. Uh, this king obvi- obviously had a really good counter espionage system going on because he totally uh knew that the Jews entered the city and he knew where they went. I mean, he's on high alert. This is a picture that the enemy's on high alert. He knows what we're doing. And he doesn't know everything. He's not God, but he he's watching us, and he's trying to figure out how to stop us. Um, some people have a a major issue, and I don't I don't get it. I really don't get it, but they have an issue. Well, how could Rahab lie to these soldiers and deceive them? Listen, get over that fact. The Bible doesn't call her a liar. Later on, it 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 reminds us that she was saved from prostitution. And and so some people get all hung up on that. I don't know if you are or not, but if you are, I just would say get over it. Sorry. Um, uh, it it it's just crazy that forty years after deliverance the from Egypt, that uh the enemy is still afraid or is now afraid of the Israelites, how the tables have turned. Um, Ja- Rahab never never questioned the destruction of Jericho. She never said, this is unfair, this. No, we know when God brings judgment, and we could complain about it, but we know when God corrects us. Um, so okay, go down to number eighteen on your notes. Uh, here's here's a pretty interesting, interesting thing uh that God does. God used Abraham, but he made him first leave his country and his family to follow God. God used Moses, but he first had to leave the comfort of Pharaoh's house and follow God. God used Ruth, but she had to leave her own people in her own home to follow God. Rahab has to leave her own people to follow God. It would have been pretty intimidating to be uh uh from Jericho and a Gentile after the destruction of your own city to then integrate in with the Jewish people. That had to she probably didn't have a great, easy life. I don't think she went from, you know, Gentile to celebrity, other than people probably respected her for delivering the spies. Still had to be hard. Um, Rahab goes on to marry the Israelite named Salmon, uh and they give birth to Boaz. Boaz is mentioned in the in the book of Ruth. Ruth is all about the Gentiles being integrated into God's family. Um, I'll just bring this out. The spies go and hide in the mountains for three days. Could that three days represent when the Jews are hiding from the Antichrist before being delivered by Jesus, which is represented to uh by Joshua? Um, you can read the rest of your notes there. As we pick up in chapter three, we'll go to the crossing of the Jordan River. But what I want us to really take away from chapter two is this. I want you just to really grasp the fact that God goes into a city and delivers this lady who loves him. God so loves you. He's not mad at you. He's not shaking his head disgusted at you. He says, you know what, I'll go into your mess and I'll deliver you from that. In fact, I won't just deliver you. I'll deliver your whole family. And I won't just deliver you. I'll actually use you in a way that you never, ever, ever, ever thought possible. One other thing, Rahab was probably looking for true love. Salmon was looking for true love. God fulfills the desires of her heart, and through her births, Jesus Christ, our Messiah, our Savior. God bless you. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. We'll be back with you next Tuesday, six thirty. We'll dive into Joshua, chapter three. Uh, please vis- visit us online this Sunday, eleven AM, Whitestone Church, TX dot com. We again, we will be back live in church, in person, eleven AM, August the second. Uh, we'll announce that over the next couple of nights to give you plenty of notice. God bless you. Thank you for joining us. We'll see you next time.